That's seven P. At this time, I'll call the May third twenty twenty two regular meeting continuing. I've got the plan permission to order. Mr. Chairman, would you call the roll please?
Mr. Sluter.
You're.
Ms. Hi.
Yeah.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here. Okay, the next item is the review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Everybody had a chance, I think, see we have the amendments to the meeting agenda. This is Sluter.
Oh. For previous conversation, I would like to make mention to strike the the future land use map from old business and add to the conference of plan.
Right, that is for the conference plan. Any objection to amending the agenda? Okay, very good. Then I entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion, go have a second.
Sorry.
Got a motion probably sectioned at all in favor of approving the amendments, should it say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much. The next item up is the consideration of the April fifth twenty twenty two draft minutes. If everyone had a chance to review the minutes. And are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April fifth. Plan Commission meeting.
Got a motion to approve the minutes, got seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much. If the next item up is the public comment period, speakers have three minutes per individual or five minutes for for proof on any non-public hearing matters. So any planning matter other than the company's plan for which we're having public hearing tonight is open for discussion. So at this time, I will open up the public comment period. Did you inside of one line?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Saying no, and then I will close the public comment period. And the next item up is one that is near and dear to my heart. We we have a comprehensive plan that was approved in twenty sixteen and had some some shortcomings, which shall we say? I think this one has been done very, very well. But we have a public hearing tonight on the comprehensive plan. Ms. Grant, if you want to say before you start.
We do have a brief.
Okay, great. You go ahead then.
This has been a little over a year coming. But we finally have the completed document. Um, goes into what is a comprehensive plan and so long range guide. It's a blueprint as part of the title comes. Part of the future growth of the county. It's kind of, you know, different wants and needs that the county needs as it's growing. So we've done our orientation, we've done research on with our consultant on Hill Studio. We've done demographic assessments. We've done multiple workshops. We've held public meetings. And then we got to the draft. And we're at the final draft for us to review tonight. We started this last January. And it's been a good year. We've had a lot of good discussions, a lot of good workshops. We've coordinated with the EDA and work supervisors and doing the comp plan. And we've had stakeholder meetings. And of course, we've also had the surveys that have gone out, which we received about six hundred. So that was pretty good. Another executive summary purpose of the plan. That gives us the overview of the county, our visions and goals and the directions for the future. What is needed? And then this is our our vision. Just kind of goes over the the contents that we whenever want to know. And this is just showing potential development areas. As of course, most of it is focused at Central Garage. And these are our corridors that you see as you're entering the county. And this again is showing Central Garage, possible growth in the future. Possible changes of some of it with the roundabout and so forth. Some of us may not ever see that, but it it's there. It's a possibility to to approve the intersection one day. And this is the courthouse village, another proposed development one day. And then talking about the courthouse developments, the way you probably know this. They they were out digging and they found an old hotel in the field. And I believe it was called the Hill Hotel. Oh, that was pretty neat. Okay, this is King William Commerce Park redevelopment is just an example on what could be done to improve it. Recreational opportunities. It's showing the park, but it's also showing future development with river access, which is much needed in the county. And of course, we want to keep our agricultural area. But we want to keep that agricultural. Oh. And keep it preserved. And this is just appendix matrix. This is some demographic and market assessments. Which all of this is also in our current comprehensive plan. Categories that are showing future growth in the county. When we get to our future land use. And this here is showing the green is the farm land and of course, the yellow is the the Chesapeake Protection Area. So anything within a hundred foot of wetlands is Resources Protection Area. Everything out of that is Resources Management Area. So the whole county is our RMA Resources Management Area. Except for the water areas. And these are some character districts that we had talked about. The Kings Forest. Which is up going toward Mango Head, Carolina. And of course, the Crossing, which is where the majority of the growth in the county is. The Legacy, which takes on a good chunk of thirty, the courthouse area. And then, of course, the town of West Point. You've got some pictures of Kings Forest. The Crossing. Legacy. And the town of West Point Main Street. Future land use categories, we've got our agricultural and our conservation areas. Our growth development areas are low density, rural residential, medium density residential, mixed use, the PD, community business, corridor business, and corporate business and industrial. And this is the future land use. As you can see, most of it is congregated right in the Central Garage, which is also where we have public water and a lot of it is public sewer. And this is just a blow up, so you can see it a little bit better. And of course, the next steps are where we're at tonight, public hearing for the planning commission. And then your recommendations. And maybe approval hopefully. It'll go to the board supervisors on May twelfth.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Graham? Any discussion for the public hearing or should we save all that for after? Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Graham. Okay, at this time, I wait for this for a long, very long time. I'm very excited as I know all the short, well. The next item up on the agenda is the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. Speakers have three minutes to speak, and if you represent a group, you have five minutes. And if you would give us your name and your district, and then you're free to speak, we'll tackle the folks in the room first. Did anyone sign up online?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Okay, so at this time, I will open up the public comment, the public hearing for the King William County twenty forty one conference plan. And I would note that we've had over four hundred surveys still out and a number of public meetings. So hopefully, we've got it with the product. And no news, it's good news, practice language to speak. All right, nobody online either. I will close the public comment here. This is the public hearing. Discussion about the comp plan including future land use map that is a part of the conference plan. Anybody?
This is like the place time late. I'm with you. Been waiting for a long, long time.
I'm waiting.
Anybody else?
Hopefully, the lack of people here tonight means that everybody else is pleased with it as well. But yeah.
Yeah, it's not perfect. I don't agree with everything in it, but I think it's very, very well done. The Hill group did a fantastic job. We had fantastic input from the Hill group staff, planning commissioners, I am delighted. So then, if there's no further discussion, I'll go. Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to say that we had over six, well, over six hundred responses to the survey that was sent out. Those were all good responses and helped to form the comprehensive plan. This this is a roadmap to the next twenty years for our development. There are a whole lot of really good ideas in there. I'd like to say that Mr. Ed Craft has promoted some of that. And I'm looking forward to, not only them, but other people in the county who question and promote a lot of that. But I'm, again, as you all have said, I think this was a maximum plan. And I think as we move forward, we need to work with and do our best to implement. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I'd just like to add, I agree with the other comments that the planning commissioners have already spoken to. But I'd also like to just say that this is a working document. And we're sure that there will be changes necessary in the future. And of course, correct me if I'm speak out of turn, but if there are any changes that come up, they will still come back for the citizens in a public hearing format. So there won't be anything that we are able to do without it coming back to the public. Again, it's a working document. We're sure it'll be changes needed.
To that, to that, your comments, Ms. Hi. We have for all business, the current subdivision, zoning ordinance was recently passed. We've already identified some things. And the comp plan, even though it's perfect today, as we implement some of these things, we'll discover new things we want to do. And so I hope that we will read this at least once a year to look at different sections of it. As we come across things that may could have been better or things that were just fine, let's prove, but need to be moved further down the road as we progress into the years. You have in front of you a resolution which is required by the Code of Virginia for us to support as the board supervisors. I apologize if y'all just getting it tonight, but there's really nothing in it other than just the fact that we're facing this comp plan. We're we're recommending approval like we do on the March twenty fifth version. And it's just a formal thing that the Code of Virginia requires us to do. Would you all like to make a recommendation on comp plan first and then the resolution or two jointly, to your preference?
We'll see what we can do jointly.
Y'all give it then? Mr. White, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And that being said, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval of the comp plan and the resolution.
I'll make that mention.
As I made a motion, you got a second. Second, a acclamation. Mr. Chairman, would you call the roll please?
Ms. Hi.
Ah.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Sluter.
Hi.
Mr. Brayden.
Aye. Very good. Thank you all very much. This is, this is exciting. So we'll take a resolution, get supervisors, and hopefully later this month, they will approve it. And then the best news for my fellow planning commissioners, this is the factors that may be thinking about which section you want to work on. All I guess one of those sections will be old business, number seven, current subdivisions, only ordinance. Ms. Grant.
Okay, so as I told you before, we've been, as we started working in the the new ordinance, we have come across some issues that we really need to revisit and probably make some changes on. So Christine and I are now working on the list of things that have been coming up that we need to revisit and see what needs to be done, to be changed. We'd like to have that discussed. Whether you want to do a separate work session or you just want to do it at the June meeting. But we will have this list to you at least two weeks apart to give you a chance to read through and and get your, you know, input on it. Several things such as parking accessory, all structures in the front, the subdivisions. That's just to name a couple of them that have come that have had issues.
Questions for Ms. Graham? Anybody?
I would be in favor of beginning of discussion this evening and that we need to go into work session, we can do that. But if you would be willing to do that.
Are you prepared to do that?
We can do it briefly, but I don't have the different ordinances in front of me to kind of go over the provisions and so forth.
Maybe, maybe you and Christine could give us a little bit of idea what some of the issues are.
Okay, um, so if I miss something, let me know. We have had five applications for variance just this year to have accessory structures on the view permitted in the front yard. I guess four of the five, they really had no alternative to place anywhere else. And most of them have all been, all but one have been a long way from the road and really not affecting the adjacent neighbors. I know in the past, and it's changed. So if the front yard is seventy five feet from the road, it wouldn't be permitted in that seventy five feet, but it could be a hundred feet from. Well, so this is something we were hoping that y'all would visit to to allow these accessory structures and in front when there's a situation like that. Another thing, or these were all in the AC district, just to kind of give you an idea. These were not in any other zoning district. They were all in AC district that were at least five acres or greater. And pretty much all of the five had an RPA or RPA feature in the back. That where the house was set back near the water. So pretty much their entire front yard, even though they were five acres or more. So say the four and a half acres was the front yard to kind of give you an idea of the parcels we were looking at.
Well, and in seventeen oh two, these accessory structures, we've been in the rear of the houses, these houses were facing the river, which is the main road. So.
Yeah, we've had some conversations about that, too. A lot of people, you know, the river is front, but the in the zoning world, the front is
Right.
property that fronts the street instead. So we have to look at it that way under the zoning ordinance.
What else?
Another thing are the subdivisions. You know, previously, there were not like the minors and subdivisions single lots and so forth, were not allowed on thirty or three sixty. They are now permitted on thirty and three sixty. I don't remember us discussing this. However, we took the twenty five acre exempt. They're not permitted on thirty to three sixty. So I didn't know if that was something that was meant to be put in there or I just don't remember several discussing it to be permitted on thirty or three sixty.
All right, and for those in the audience, this I'll give the book before you. So for those in the audience, as well as commissioners, all remember, we originally hoped to have a crosswalk with the old ordinance, the new ordinance. And that became impossible. So there may be one or more of those sorts of anomalies prepped in. Who knows how? This way.
Yeah. Oh, Ms. Graham. Under the old two thousand and three, two thousand and three, two thousand and five, whichever it was, for minor residential subdivisions, it does say in there this would be in section sixty sixty six, one eighty five streets and item six, reduction of traffic impacts for the minor subdivision that joins or contains a US Highway three sixty or state primary highway route thirty. No residential lot shall be planted in a minor subdivision which has its primary frontage on US Highway three sixty or state Highway thirty. Reversed frontage lots have access only from a parallel secondary highway or from a new public streets are required. So that's that's the reason this was carried forward and also put on the home site subdivisions.
We just wanted to make sure and and be clear on that because I know in the old ordinance, it was not permitted. However, under the old ordinance, a minor had, was not allowed to have a lane. With the new ordinance, you can't do a minor down the lane. They'll have the one right away for the, to serve the four lots.
Right.
Which is a safety thing, which is good. Um. Another thing we're getting complaints about are accessory dwellings. We put that into ordinance to allow an accessory dwelling on the property by right at the AC. But we also capped the living area to eight hundred square feet. A lot of families that are trying to move in and be closer to their parents, don't take care of them. They're having an issue with that eight hundred square feet. So I was hoping that that would be something that we could also look at again. I know they can, you know, they could file for variance to that if they wanted to do so. They could go through another public hearing process. Another thing that we've had some problems with is parking space requirements for commercial. A lot of that had been taken out of the new ordinance. It's, we're going to review site plans for commercial businesses. A lot of the information isn't in there anymore. So we're having an issue with that. Another thing that's taken out also that we've not been able to find, if it's in there, we could not find it anywhere. People with chickens. The housing used to have a setback of a hundred feet. A barn had to be at least a hundred feet from the property line. We can't find that distance anywhere in there anymore. And I don't remember us discussing taking out the distance from the property line on this as well. Anything else missing?
There's some clarification on some of the signs possibly. Temporary stands, we've run across just recently. We've run across that with fireworks stand that we're looking at right now, where that section is completely out of the ordinance that wasn't there previously. Has been completely removed. And there was another, and I can't think of it off the top of my head. That had two conflicting statements in the ordinance about five acres. Said five acres, and then it also said thirty thousand.
Cluster development. Yep. I forgot that one as well. The cluster development is talking about the lot size requirements. And I don't have the exact verbiage in front of me, but it talks about minimal lot size being five acres and the cluster development. And then just below that, it talks about if it's public water or public sewer, it's twenty thousand or fifteen thousand. If it's public water or public sewer, it's twenty thousand square feet. And if there's no public water or public sewer, it's thirty thousand square feet. So we need to look at the verbiage on that as well. So what I plan to do is make copies of the old and the new for us to to review one each of these. And if there's anything else that y'all know, please let us know. So we can put that all together to do that deal.
Definitely proposing for the June meeting.
For the June meeting.
Ms. Graham, I also remember, I think public comment areas, there was a lady that had complained about the kennel setback.
That's something that we can look at again.
So what you're proposing then is to bring the areas you've identified. And again, I would correct on officials that there are some you've come across, bring them to Ms. Graham's attention. What you're proposing is to have that for discussion at the June meeting.
Yes.
And from there, we could go into a work session or or discuss that meeting then and then draft verbiage to go forward with the with the public hearing and an update of the ordinance.
Yes.
That everybody is thinking? Agree with everyone? Y'all give that? Okay, so if you all at the June meeting have the 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 current sections of the ordinance along with the old ones, all for discussion of these and any others that you might have forgotten of being happening with members tonight. And then if we have anything, we can all support them. One of the things we talked about, I don't know, I've not looked at this in a while. One of the things we talked about was what further changes we might want to do based on the base of the comp plan. And I'm not aware to be saying that I feel comfortable addressing in a, in a short, you know, these are all things that sound like we need to prepare quickly because of problems creating both your office and for the citizens. And there may be other things we want to do that will take a longer time that would make the ordinance better, but maybe we don't want to worry about it this go out. Are y'all agree with that as well? All right, thank you. Okay, we have no new business on the agenda. Does anyone have anything to do with that?
I'm just curious. I know you mentioned in the past, there was a, can't remember what kind of dollars it was, but I see a bunch of orange potatoes.
Dollar generals. They told me they will have this completed in July.
Wow.
They said you not have a choice. It has to be completed in July.
I was sad to see the the things up to keep the mud from sliding and ditches and on roads and everything. So. I saw that like.
Yeah.
Any others?
On the on the Dollar General. The entrance will be sort of in the middle of that property.
It's going to be more to the, if you're facing it, I mean, thirty, it's going to be more to the left side.
Close to the wood line.
Is that when the chance comes out now, total room has like an opening?
I'm not sure. I have seen this open up, but I didn't pay attention to where it was opened. And they'll have a, an entrance also on the back side, but their main entrance will be towards from thirty.
Where we'll restore it, that's the.
Um. It's going to have these. It's not going to be on that corner, of course. It's going to be away from that corner, probably about.
Midway between the corner and the.
Yeah. A little bit more toward the corner because the left side is going to be where they're there's something and so forth.
That's a favorite question. What kind of building? Building materials will be used.
They are using, it's a brick, it's a brick on the bottom and then it, I remember where it was thirty point on the front and the sides and then metal on the back.
Was that seen recently?
It's, it's going to be their standard store. It's, it's going to be their standard store.
Yeah, one more. Just, Mr. Wagner said last month, they've, um, noted that that lot on three sixty. Now I've noticed they've added many, many more loads of dirt and now it's way up and has, I don't know if you found it in the forest, we had asked. What it's right next to the, out of truck sales, it's kind of like a big pond in the middle and the side has a road that's raised, but now they keep throwing the middle up. So now the middle is like way up. Someone just wanted to get what that might be.
I haven't been out there recently. I know this is something that they got stopped on, um, but they are back in full swing and I know they are putting a retention on back in there. Um, there are some wetlands along the back and toward the right side that they have to stay out of. Um, but yeah, it's going to be an expansion of their trucking business.
Physical expansion building.
Parking area.
Anyone else? All right, thank you all very much. The next five months, then are the staff and special committee reports. We have this meeting, of course, we need to have staff reports. This is true.
We are still running those reports, um, but being, um, just the end of the month, so we will have those to you as soon as they are completed.
Will you send electronic papers?
What, what is your pleasure?
Yeah.
Email, Sean.
Yeah, just send it by email. That would be fine.
Yes.
Have the team members, the questions. Staff. All right, uh, the last item for tonight then are the commissioner comments. Let me start with this then, Ms. Hyde.
Well, thank you, as I always say, to all of you who have come out to attend in person and anyone that came online. Um, this has been a long process in going through the comp plan and we really do value the feedback that we've gotten. Um, the volume of surveys really spoke um, significantly that people are interested in providing input and that's much appreciated. So thank you to all the citizens who have, um, either come forward as far as surveys are concerned or spoken to us or spoken at meetings. It really makes our job easier, um, when it comes to making decisions when we get that kind of feedback. So thank you to everyone and thank you to, um, my fellow, um, planning commission members as well for all the time that has been spent in, in making this successful. Bringing to a, a public hearing and a benefit tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde. Mr. Greenwood.
Same thing as Ms. Hyde, as Mr. Greenwood, as I said, many over six hundred uh, citizens involved, very, very good process. Thanks for staying up again, fellow, fellow commissioners. Like I said, it must agree, this is one of our pet pains of, I've had for the whole eleven years I've been a court supervisor. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ms. White.
Um, I just want to say that, um, I'm, I'm glad to see that, um, we are coming close to the completion of the, uh, Bluegrass two thousand forty-one. Uh, as I said, it's the next plan and I'm very much looking forward to seeing this plan go into effect, um, sooner than later. Uh, one of the things, a couple of new things, we will be putting in, um, new water lines and just top water tower in, um, in, improving the coverage area for the water lines, for the water, uh, for new construction. We're still having a problem with the, uh, having to know if Senator Bishop Commission, um, timelines, we're getting that work completely done and that's going to have some impact on us, which I hate to see, but hopefully those things can be worked out. Um, but all in all, again, I think this is an excellent plan. Particularly issues with, uh, river access that we haven't had before, recreation, um, seems like we are having a, a good bit of activity, uh, people being interested in coming to the county and developing the county and I sort of look forward to that. And, I mean, thanks to everyone, so. I love the report anyway.
Thank you, like, Mr. Slutter.
Well, certainly, I'd like to, everybody, uh, their comments at work, but this, uh, and I guess in the spirit of, um, public service recognition week, a lot of this legwork, um, was, uh, sweat equity per se, was Ms. Graham and her team, um, in the Hill studio that, that really put this together. So thank you for all your efforts with this, because, um, that's a big fight for just us as a commission to, to chew on there. Um, and I'm excited to see how this plays out as it's implemented. I'm sure we'll have probably, we, we, we should have changes, honestly. We have, if we have honest dialogue with, um, with the the, uh, citizens of the county, then there should be changes. We should have feedback, um, so that we know, um, what works and what doesn't work. Obviously, we're all human and there's going to be some mistakes in here, some things in between, so. Um, but it is, it's, it's good to see that we've already made some headway in some of this, um, in the, like, uh, Mr. Wagner said, that in, um, the, the water tower and the, the infrastructure that's widely needed and the, uh, the commerce areas, uh, you know, that, that is already, um, going one, the, um, one thing I just thought was, was interesting is, is, as I was thinking, you know, but our, our, um, our work sessions with the EBA and with the board supervisors, we had discussions with those members and, you know, typically with this type of, of, um, project, you get a lot of different, um, ideas, a lot of opinions and can get really, um, you get down in the weeds quite a bit and, and, and the disagreements can, can really, you know, slow progress in discussion. I didn't really see a lot of that, um, and I think it's because, for the most part, we all had that same, um, desire to see the county grow in a responsible way, uh, both residentially and commercially and, uh, to see that, um, you know, that kind of brewing mentality across the EBA, the board supervisors and, and all of us here. Uh, this was really a pleasant remark.
Thank you, Mr. Slutter. I will take a small number of folks tonight as a compliment. Uh, I, I started my, my professional career over forty years ago and, uh, never got any kind of, uh, responses from my boss. I said, Mr. Brown, how am I doing? He said, John, if I have a problem with you, I'll let you know. So the small number of folks here tonight, I'll take that as, as citizens as a whole are happy with what we've done. Uh, I'm grateful for all their involvement, over six hundred people responding to public meetings. Again, thanking you fellow commissioners who have slugged through all this, uh, Ms. Grant and your folks. Thank you all so much for that. And I think I will, and David Hill, Dope, did an excellent job of work with, uh, with, with consultants for, uh, but same amount of years, forty years. That's one of the best, if not the best, we've ever had to work with. So I'm grateful for everybody and like Mr. Greenwood, I'm grateful we finally made it, so. Well, that'll party tonight. Actually, after, after portion five groups. Without further ado, if there's no objection, I will, uh, hopefully make third constitution objections. Hey, the meeting is closed. Thank you all very much.